Okay, folks, six o'clock, get the meeting started. For any of you folks that haven't signed in, go ahead and sign in. First order is to review and approve the minutes for September 4th, 2024. Right here, Tom, you got, you got to look them over.
Well, I just gave one copy just for you guys both, so.
I looked them over.
I did look them over.
Yeah, so, need a motion to approve the minutes for September 4th.
So move.
Okay, any discussion, any changes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes. Okay, we move on to the next. Are you ready to roll?
I'm ready to roll.
Okay.
I think you should have received an email.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, no, we can share this.
Yeah, this is regarding what's called MRR grant, municipal energy resilience program. It's an opportunity for us to apply for up to $500,000 to address energy efficiency, sort of new heating technologies, and other what are called resiliency measures like solar panels and that type of thing. History-wise, this started just over a year ago with the SLAC board. There was the opportunity to get some stipends, I think $4,000 stipend at the time, to create an energy committee, and we decided to pass on that. We just didn't have capacity or interest to start an energy committee. But the one thing we did, that Carrie did, was do these pre-building assessments. So they came in, what was it, Carrie, February?
I think so.
March timeframe?
Yeah.
So what we did was, we took the opportunity to have the community building, the fire station, and the Groton Town Garage kind of assessed, and they came back with these 30-page reports on energy, where things can be made more energy efficient, the impact of bringing in heat pumps, and the impact of putting solar panels on the roof of those buildings. And this kind of, by doing that, we kind of put ourselves in a position now for what's called a MRR implementation grant, which is up to 500K, there's no match involved. What we would do would be to submit the application by the deadline, which is September 27th. And basically, you know, working with NVDA, who's been kind of our champion around this stuff, and has really kind of kept us front and center for towns in the kingdom, they're recommending we basically request as much as we want. That meets the requirements of the assessment reports that came in. So that number is about $280,000. Towns are, one of the important aspects of this is that the criteria that the state of Vermont is using is looking at the total energy burden by town and prioritizing those towns that have higher energy burdens than other towns within the state. So we, Groton, are considered a high burden town. If you look at their list of 250 towns, we are ranked 40. There's $35 million being distributed, max it's $500,000. So there's going to be, at a minimum, at least 70 towns receiving this money if they all get their 500K. Now, in our case, our ask would not be for 500K. Our ask would be for about 280K. And then, we'd have to work this number out with NVDA because we can include a 10% contingency, in case the price of materials goes up in the period. And it also includes a 20% soft cost, so we can find somebody to help implement and run with the project management aspect of things with that, with those additional funds. The other good thing about this is that, you know, the key, in my opinion, is getting the application in. And then by October 25th, we'll know whether or not we receive the grant, and if so, for what, and then we can decide at that point what we want to do. So, you know, if you look at the second page of what I handed out there, what I basically did was filled these three 30-page assessment reports and started pulling out the relevant numbers in terms of what different things cost. ECM stands for energy, it's basically the envelope. It's things that you do to weatherize your building, to put in more insulation, that type of thing. And so if you look at this, there's certain costs here. These are costs that we would request as part of this grant. This wouldn't be out of our pocket at all. And then you start to see a return, a savings per year in energy savings. And a lot of that is a shift from fuel oil to electricity. And, you know, if we were to just do the weatherization ECM-type investment stuff just for this community building, we'd, our savings estimated by these assessments is about $4,342 per year. If we were to implement the solar panels, okay, or get the grant for the solar panels as well, we'd save another $5,200. And similar estimates are kind of for the other two buildings, the fire station and Groton Town Garage. I think if we were to get everything in these assessments, again, these are assessments, so they're kind of estimates, but if they're ballpark, you know, we could be looking at saving around $16,000 every year, which works out to be $8,000 after five years, $161,000 after 10 years in energy cost savings. So, you know, I think what, well, I'd like to thank Carrie because she kept this alive for us by doing these assessments and put us in a position right now where we can go for this. I don't see a lot of downside outside of my time and a little bit of Carrie's time to put an application in. I think it allows us to see, to get another card from the deck and see what that looks like, and then we can decide what we want to do in terms of implementing whatever grant money that we receive. And I think strategy-wise, this to me is the key building. So I think we would, my opinion would be to make the strongest case for the community building to be fully loaded. By that, I mean, all the weatherization stuff, all the envelope improvements around the building, but also ask for solar panels, also ask for battery backups, so we have a building that's running seven by 24, whether it's flooding or power outages or anything like that. And there's the option to go for an EV charter as well, if we want to make the ask for that. And then, I think similarly, you know, just from talking with NVDA, given our sort of ranking on that list of towns that's going to be used for prioritizing things, I think it makes sense as well to ask for at least solar panels on the other two buildings if we're open to doing that.
Now, are you thinking of asking for like windows and doors, that type?
Yeah, if you go into those reports and I put you those links in the emails, you'll see pictures of doors, attic areas, they can be all.
Yeah, I saw that stuff, but I didn't know if you were, that was part of what?
Yeah, I think the ECM measures, that envelope, the building envelope things are the highest priority with the state of Vermont. So, you know, I think, yeah, who knows how they're going to decide how to allocate the funds, but I'm sure that the ECM measures are the first thing to get done. Because they just bring longevity to existing buildings and that type of thing. You know, I think, so, you know, I think if we get, if we apply, those are, those are going to be the first dollars that come in. And NVDA is, they're looking at pulling together resources to help their towns do the project management stuff too, which would be, I think, big for us at this stage since we don't have an energy committee and will allow us to dedicate some resource so we're not asking Carrie or someone else in town to carry that load.
So you can, once you've got the funds, you're not locked into what you've asked to do, you can say, "I would like to do windows at this."
That's, yeah, that's what I've been told, is there's flexibility now. They may just come back and say, "Hey, you got 100K to do windows, weatherization, new insulation," or something like that. But the way it's been sort of presented to me by NVDA is there's some flexibility around things. And the important thing is to get the, well, the important thing was doing the assessment. So I don't know how many towns in the state did that, number one. And then, now to get the application in. And then assess after October 25th and take a look at what comes back and decide what we want to do. So, there's a third page here, it's a letter from the Planning Commission. I was in, at their meeting last night. This definitely dovetails well with their priorities and where they kind of want to see the town going and, you know, what's in the current town report and how they're thinking about the future town report as well. So that's where we're at. You know, my ask is, you know, kind of your approval for the town of Groton for with submitting an application by the deadline. I'll probably need some of Carrie's time. NVDA has offered their time to walk us through the application on the phone and as we put it in. But I'm sure there'll be some questions there that are going to need her input and assistance on, and I'll probably run some of the questions by the Planning Commission as well to make sure they're aligned with some of the things that they've been thinking about. So that's where we're at. I don't think there's any downside right now. I think, you know, it's a chance to get in the game and see and take advantage of what we've done already to put ourselves in this position.
And I read in there where there is a possibility to get the money upfront.
Yeah, there is.
I mean, I don't know what our funds are to dive into. I mean, after the flood, who knows when we're going to get?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I should have brought that up. The current, the typical recipient will get, will get 20% of the money upfront, and then it's on a submission basis, but there is opportunity to request hardship. And I think, from what I know, and I think we probably, I know definitely we want to work on these words with Carrie, but I think that we would go ahead and request that.
Yeah, if I was on, I just came on to the board when this was brought up, you know, and it was kind of put, I think it was more, do we have the personnel?
Yeah.
And now we've got someone that stepped up.
Well, I mean, I'm definitely step up to help with this application.
Yeah, plus, how many more people is it going to take other than you?
Well, that's where, the nice thing about this grant is the 20% of grant funds can be going into the soft cost category, where we can go to NVDA and say, "Hey, you've got a project manager resource who can manage this, manage the RFPs and things like that for us. We can allocate some of that 20%."
Have you ladies done that, anything like that?
No, I mean, not specifically that, no.
No, I mean, I just, you know, personally, if the building needs updates for energy, yes, the solar panels, I assume they go on the roof, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, they would.
That's the future, I know that, and it's, it's just the time, the time that's going to be put into it by, you know.
Yeah, we're saving $100,000.
Saving, yeah, yeah, and so if we commit, we got to follow it through, you know.
Yeah, we also have $40,000 to $60,000 if you look at the 20% number.
Yeah.
To find somebody.
To find somebody, yeah. Do they have resources for that, do you know?
They do, they, they know it's an issue. They're, I forget their exact language, but their intent is to have resources available. So, I mean, they're not, they're probably looking at these numbers too going, "All right, we're talking like $30,000 to $40,000 for some towns. Who can dedicate it to that?" I mean, and what is it, it's managing some vendors coming in and some RFP processes? I mean, we did that for Bora, and, you know, that was volunteers. And, you know, that's not somebody dedicated who's going to make $30K per town, up to $30K or $40K per town. I mean, the other option to do would be, again, to me, it's, the important thing is getting the application in and seeing what we end up with, and then buying the window of time to let NVDA come in and say, "Hey, here are your resources." Or maybe we get the word out in town that somebody wants to make $20,000 or $40,000 to do something, right, to manage this for us.
Yeah, so how long do we have, if we get approved? Or can, can we say, get approved, and we got $280,000, then we decide?
We can decide we want to walk away from it. We can just say goodbye.
So our decision tonight is solely to get it rolling, get it, see that we get approved, or what we get approved for.
Yeah, it's that and just start, at least plan to see about this.
Yeah. Brett, any question?
What happened, every day, what we do with NVDA is, they'll, they'll put out and hire a vendor.
Yeah.
Okay, if they don't have the personnel time, then so they'll, they'll just advertise getting hired better.
Yeah, so, I just don't want to, I don't want to get something involved where it adds another load on Carrie or Lisa, you know. And being new to it, I don't know. You know, you can't just keep adding to their workload.
No, totally agree, and that's kind of why I volunteered to.
Yeah, yeah, very much appreciated. Any thoughts, Tom?
I think we'd be crazy not to at least go beyond to the next step and find out what we can get and feel it out and see what we're going to be able to get help with. Because I'm sure there's a lot of small towns that are going to be in the same boat as we are, that don't have the personnel to run a project like this. And I'm sure that they are planning for that, obviously, by allowing that, the funds to do it. If we've got an opportunity to get some infrastructure like that into our buildings and town, we'd be foolish not to try.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. Carrie, any input?
No, it makes sense to do the next step.
Do the next step, okay. All right. Need a motion to move forward with the MRR Energy Resilience Program?
So move.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got, thank you very much, Mike.
Well, thank you.
Let us know what you need from the SLAC board. Appreciate you moving that forward.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks again, Carrie, for keeping this thing on.
Okay. Moving on. Highway, get anything from Harold?
He made a comment that he sees us tonight, but I don't see him, so maybe he's not coming.
All right, I did go out and check, the culvert's well on its way. They got a couple more sections to put in, a couple of towers.
Tim Ruggles stopped in at the office and chatted with him.
Yeah, so I guess it's going to go.
That it was going fine, yeah. They had to get chief's equipment in there to get some ledger.
Do some hammering, it's a little bit of added expense that we were planning for. It wasn't as bad as we, he was only there for a few hours, so. So, yeah, so that's going good, so I guess we'll move on to Treasure.
I don't have much. I've spoken to you, all three of you individually about that extra parking area off the railroad tracks that has, all the grass has grown up. I spoke to our town mower, and he said that he would take care of it and adjust his, he'd let us know, it's $65 the first time, then it would be less each time, but it would probably just be one time this year. I think there's an event on the 28th, so he'll have it done for then, and he'll let us know what it would change for the budget for next year.
Yeah, next year, we're going to have, that definitely got away from us.
I do have, we went to a training, two-day training last week, and we were looking at different things, and we adopted rules and procedures of the SLAC board back in, I think we adopted it in May of 2020, I can't read it if it's three or two, but not too long ago. And then we saw there was more updated ones that I didn't know if you wanted to add to our policy, so I made copies for you guys to read and see the difference and see if it's worth reviewing. So it's VLCT's, like, guide, and then.
Model policy.
And then you just go from there. You put in our town, and this is our current one, and this is VLCT's. Current one and VLCT. So it's just something to look at and notice it was quite a bit different, a lot longer and in more detail. So, didn't know if you wanted that to be worked on. And I think I've told all of you, but we'll say it, that drainage project, I talked to Nate, and he's saying it'll be the first week, first part of October. So I've let him know the dates of all our concerns, and we'll just see what happens.
Yeah, I think they were starting down by the river anyways.
Yeah.
Well, that will fit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, just, you know, fingers crossed, it'd be nice to get that done. I guess that's all I have.
Good, Carrie?
I received the parade permit as approved from the state. We need to have the signs up by the 27th, the road closed signs, four of them for each of the roads that lead into town. So got to figure out getting those up.
Yeah, I talked to Harold, he's going to do that.
Okay, and then two of the sheriff deputies will be here during the day, around 10:00 AM to 2:30. They did it last year, walked around, and they'll help close. So then we also need people to close the roads, so the sheriffs will close most likely 3:02 each end. And then we need two people, one to close Minert Hill and one to close Powder Spring. I think Dan might be around to help with one. And then we would need a fourth one to get all of them closed for the 1:30 parade.
Who's volunteered other than Dan in the past?
It wasn't Dan last year, it was one year, it was Mark Puffer.
It was Mark.
And then he grabbed somebody from the fire department, I think it was Junior that did one road, and then it was Zach one year. It's kind of whoever you can get, but it does need to happen, so.
So that's, that's all on track. And as everyone knows, FEMA's been here for a month. I just barely got this email, a lot of pretty good information on what they've done. 1,245 inspections, $4,656,000 have been approved for individual assistance. So this is for the household stuff, not the road stuff that's starting next, the roads. So, you know, it is going over how much they've already approved for people. So that's nice to hear that people are getting, getting the help. So that's really all I have tonight.
I'd just like to publicly thank you, Carrie and Harold, for working together on all of this FEMA stuff because a lot of towns don't have somebody that's qualified to be able to handle that kind of thing, and you're doing a really good job with it. And we're extremely lucky to have you doing it.
Well, there's a lot more to come. We're just starting the, really the beginning of the road part, so. Get all that into the portal, so that, that'll still be a process, but it's moving along.
How many inspections did you say?
1,245. Yeah, four, over $4 million approved, this is for individual assistance, 1,458 households. And I know when they were here, you know, they basically went, I don't want to say every, every property, but, you know, I think even homes that weren't really even anywhere near the flooding, you know, got contacted.
We need to stop in our room.
Yeah, so, you know, it was a nice group of people, they stopped in every little bit, and, you know, I know people were, you know, concerned about not realizing they were here and the time, you know, July, and, you know, I tried to explain that it, you know, the president approved a declaration on August 20th, you know, that, that was, that was a delay, you know, from the time of the flood to August 20th, FEMA can't come any earlier than that. I think they were here 10 days from when it was approved, so, you know, FEMA can't come until they're told they can come.
Yeah, I know, Lisa, you had said the buyout stuff's moving forward.
Yeah, it's all been submitted, and, you know, it's going to be a process. When we went to the training, we were talking to other town clerks who had been working on buyout for last year and how it was coming to head right now. And it is quite a process with, you know, inspections and selling the home and then doing the closing with the selling and all that.
And also Dan's put in a quite, quite a bit of time, you know, helping all these property owners, like, you know, he's making their case, you know, to hopefully get them approved.
Yeah, and I've attached all his information with each file. There's seven that we have sent, so.
All right, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Assessor, Dorothy, you're up.
So I went to the, a ballot of conference, yearly conference committees of Vermont Association of Assessors and listed, it was the sixth down at Lake Maury, there were all-day workshops and vendors and stuff, a lot of, a lot of good, good learning. The PDF file that's going to have the properties so that other folks can look at the property cards, I'm working on that. I've done two or three hours with Nimmerk, and there's still some other things we've got to tweak, a couple more changes we've got to make, but that's, that's coming along, that's in the process. The photos, Dan has worked again this week. He got like another 28 parcels done this week, and that's kind of, he's, he's actually talked with Nimmerk stuff with some, with Chris at Nimmerk there. He's had a couple glitches with the, with the tablet. And when he talked to Chris, Chris said, "Oh, a lot of regular guys are having the same glitches." So it's something, there's something that's a glitch with the software, but it doesn't happen enough, so if they are able to fix it. But Dan was encouraged that the guys that are using it all the time are having the same, the same glitch. So he's, he had 28 done, 28 parcels done this week, and he kind of, he's kind of thinking that that's like a good number, 28 to 30 at a time. And then he, that's taking him like two or three days to do those, and it's not, it's not tying up the tablet and my software here in the office. I mean, that's kind of like the time that he wants, he, you know, feels comfortable spending it weeks, so. And we're both learning things every, every time we use it. Every time, I went in the other day and did, downloaded the parcels onto the tablet and did something new as far as, I can do up to 10 parcels, 10 roads, and make it one file for him instead of having 10 files, and that worked. So it's, we're learning as we go along, but it's, that's coming. And so we've got, we've got Powder Spring Road done completely and everything on the east side of the west side. So that whole side of town, all the way up to like Anis Road, and everything is done. And then we're going to start up Minert Hill, start up Minert Hill next week. So he comes in like Monday or something, gets the tablet. I've got like anywhere from 25 to 30 parcels downloaded, and then he goes out and does it, and then brings it back to me. So it's, we're getting there, it's going to be, and he was, he's concerned about the parcels at the pond. And I said, "Well, we're just going to leave that to the end because we've got the best, we had the best pictures the last time. We had the most pictures that we could identify in 2019 with the last reappraisal. So the pond will be the last part that we do because we've got good pictures there from 2019, so." But it's, it's coming. And Dan's, Dan's been very, as far as figuring out stuff. And then I was dining at the top with Chris at Nimmerk because that, because then he got some. And then I was hiding at the top with Chris at Nimmerk cause that, cause then he got some of our biggest questions answered and, and, and Nimmerk's been very good as far as helping us. The assessor position, um, I'm still working on getting that job description updated. And I'm gonna try to, I'll try to get ads out hopefully in the next week or so. I've called, um, two or three individuals that we were recommended, um, and they both were, um, more busy than they want to be. So at this point, I think I'm just gonna try to get, um, the job description together and then get it, it, get it advertised. Um, and see, see what we get, um, as far as applicants for the, the assessor position. The reappraisal, um, Barb Slushender, the, our district advisor, um, has been, I've been talking with her like almost on a daily basis with, with ideas and questions. I've talked extensively with Chris, um, at Nimmerk and Ed Clodfelter. I talked probably an hour today on the phone with him as far as what services they have available. Nimmerk is our software program. And so they have, um, they also do, they do reappraisals and they do, they're helping some other towns. So, um, and I talked with Burnet. They've been using Nimmerk, um, here and there. They've got like three brand new listeners in Burnet. And so Nimmerk comes in occasionally and will do like a lot of inspections on brand new houses and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm trying to, um, communicate with different resources and see what's out there and what, what's gonna work. Talking with Barb, um, the district advisor, at this point, um, she's feeling that we're probably not gonna end up doing a statistical reappraisal. It's, it, it's really late in the year and it need to be done by June. And there's not, there's not really somebody that's gonna step in and get that kind of work done. Where, where John and I have the background and we'd already done the, um, the data quality study. So at this point, I, she's, she's leaning towards us doing a full reappraisal down the road. That, that the statistical just isn't the, there's nobody out there that's gonna step in at this late date and get it done for next year. So, um, and one of the conversations I had with Nimmerk is they're scheduling into twenty twenty-nine. So, and I said to them, I said to Ed today, I said, so, well, what are the chances, you know, if, if we get on the list, maybe if we get squeaked in? And he said, Dorothy, I've got sixty-three reappraisals ahead of you. So he said, you know, this is, and the state, his feeling and Barb's feeling is that if we're, we have a plan and we're moving forward and this is what we're planning on doing, that that's gonna be okay with the state. And that there aren't, there aren't a lot of options at this point because we're, everybody in the state is looking to reappraise. And there are people that are not on their list for, forever. So, um, so what, one of the things that I'm gonna do, there's a list of, the state has a list of appraisal firms. And I went through that with Barb Slushender and, um, we've narrowed it down to about eight, eight or nine, I think nine companies. Um, so within the next week, um, I'm gonna get letters to those nine companies just saying, this is what we're thinking, this is what we need to do. Are you going to assist? And then from there, we'll, at some point, we'll do an RFP. Um, but for now, um, and this would be anywhere from a sixty to eighty thousand dollar project, which we have, we have like sixty-nine or sixty-four thousand now in, in our fund. So I realize that we need to follow the purchasing policy and get, you know, at least two or three. We can't just say, okay, we want you to do this. We need to have, you know, done some background and done, gotten some other, um, quotes and stuff. And so that's what I'm hoping to do with the letter is to get responses back that no, we can't do this. Or yes, we can do it. And then move forward with an agreement, something for an agreement with a company that says, yes, we're gonna do it in twenty twenty-nine or whatever. And, um, one of the things, one of the things that came up when I said, I sent an initial email to Nimmerk to say would you be, would our, what are the possibilities of coming in and doing a statistical reappraisal? Um, Ed Clodfelter, who's an Eastmont pillar, sent a, a excellent email back that said, at this point, we wouldn't want to step in and do that because of your last reappraisal. There we've found Nimmerk and other companies do the reappraisal differently than the company did that we had to do it. So they said, there's no way we can step in and just do parts of this. We want to do, we want to make all the changes and get everything right and start, you know, start fresh. So, um, that's one of the things. And that was one of the big things that John and I had found was there's an error with, um, with roads, with land grades. And how we, how the first two acres were valued and how the residual land was valued. And I went through one area and, you know, there's like forty or fifty parcels that needed to be, need to be fixed that I had found already. And so that was one of our plans with this reappraisal, with the statistical, was that we were gonna fix at least all those. And that's what Nimmerk said was that we can't step in and then just do, you know, a two-day project here. It's gotta be, it's gotta be a bigger project. So that's kind of where those four big projects are. Um, I've talked with Gary. He's gonna come in and do some computer updates. Um, as far as, um, see if he can find, there's an, there's a large, um, document that was our last RFP that I'm hoping he can find on Kitty's old computer. And so he was gonna try to do that this week. And then also I'm trying to, I've been working on getting, um, all of the emails that go to John Westinghouse. I've been trying to get those backed off so that he's not still getting emails from us. And Gary's gonna work on some of those things here on our computer. So I think that's about my, that's it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm trying to, I think, um, I've got a lot of balls in the air, but I'm, I'm feeling like the more I talk with like Nimmerk or Barb and some of the other state people that, um, I'm feeling more confident than I was a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just trying. But I've got, I think I've got a handle on everything. So.
Awesome. And just if you need something, reach out to yourself.
Okay, I will. Um, but it's just, at this point, I'm just, I'm just, um, I just wanna kind of handle this myself and not have other people asking for quotes and emails and emails and that sort of thing. So that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to do.
If you feel comfortable doing that.
Okay, yeah. And the state's, the state's been really good and Nimmerk's been very good. Um, and I think, once we can get the letters out to the other companies, then we can kind of move forward with where I think we're moving. So.
Good. Perfect. Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, fire. Rescue. Fast.
Um, I don't think, there's no report.
No report?
Nope.
Good. All right. Updates on ongoing grants? Just have the.
No, just the drainage.
Drainage. Yeah, okay.
I got a little update.
Yeah?
A community connect grant that we applied for back in June twenty twenty-three. It's two point eight five million dollar USD to grant. Uh, to basically connect most of the rest of Groton with high-speed internet service. Uh, N K broadband's gonna match that with like one point two five million. Uh, so it's like a four point one million dollar project. Um, I'm, uh, we can, they haven't made decisions yet. We are getting good signs though because they're asking for, I think today I just heard they're asking for another environmental study, which is good, I've been told is a good sign. Um, and hopefully we'll know, uh, in the next month. This process has taken fifteen months so far. Uh, but it's a chunk of change and it would, uh, kind of, um, well, first of all, backup, we went live in July with service, or I shouldn't say we, N K broadband did from Peachum down to three oh two and then three oh two west, uh, to South Rygate. So those residents all now have access to high-speed fiber if they want it. Um, this would connect most of the rest of Groton outside the village area with fiber service if we get this. And the timing on some of that, I think, would be, I heard today that it would be probably second half of twenty twenty-five for part of that area to get connected and serviced and then TBD on the rest of that area. So, um, good signs there, um, but we just have to wait another week. Hopefully we'll know in another month or so. And as part of this, if you're not familiar with it, because it's two-day, uh, year involvement on the board, uh, it's not only bringing, um, fiber to residents, it's also, there's also a community center building aspect uh, that's been allocated as part of the funding. This would be something, uh, that we talked to Rural Edge. We've got a space, at least we, we need to revisit to see if we still have that space right in the village, which would be a center to help residents advance their degrees, find employment, um, do other things professionally, uh, or just advance, uh, their careers and interests. Um, that would be cart and parcel, uh, with, uh, with this, um, grant. So it's fiber plus a community center. So.
And who, can you remind everyone who would be running the community center?
N K broadband. Um, it would be hiring, um, the person. And then one of the things when we were doing the grant, this is a community grant, so showing community involvement and interest was really important. We did a survey of people within the potentially affected areas. I think we got a hundred and thirteen responses, uh, from these areas. And I think about forty people put their hand up to help volunteer at that center as well. Now, I don't know what that number would be today in terms of actual volunteers, but there'd be a, N K broadband would be hiring somebody and probably look at layering it similar to what the library does, um, with, uh, volunteers. And our community center, just complicating things more, is, uh, would be a dedicated space, but it would also be leveraging the library, uh, for, uh, different, uh, services. And I think we've got about twenty thousand of equipment, uh, or, or budget in that, uh, grant that would go to our library here. And we've got another ten or twelve that would cover the South Rygate library with equipment as well. To lift, uh, places up and to provide, uh, access points where people can go after work, after school, that type of thing. So.
So are a lot of people signing up for it to have access to?
Uh, I don't know the numbers. I, I know, I, I think Willis.
Willis does.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but I don't know the, I haven't seen the rest of the numbers. Yeah, it just came out at the end of July. So, yeah.
Does it work well? Does Willis say it works well?
Yeah. Very good. Yeah, I think the, the intro package speed is a hundred minutes down, hundred up. So, I mean.
Much better than what this is.
Yeah, I mean, if you have CCI consolidated like we do, it's four, three point eight nine down. Well, we don't anymore, but it was three point eight nine down, point nine up. Okay, so in certain cases, it's twenty-five to a hundred times faster. Yeah.
Good. All right. Okay, what's the public? Anybody, any other business?
Michael Thomas.
Hi, Michael.
From Wells River. Appreciate you letting me speak at this event. I'm meeting. I'm here representing the Crossmont Trail. This is like deja vu. Cause I was here earlier in the year with the same agenda to sponsor our Crossmont Trail annual meeting here in Groton. But something happened back in July that kind of messed things up. So here we are in LA today. Nothing about that subject. I was joking pretty much. But our annual meeting is going to coincide with what's been our traditional Crossmont Trail Fall Foiler Ride, which would be its twenty-seventh annual. It's going to, uh, we're gonna start out with our annual meeting. Uh, there's a quick agenda outline in here. Uh, we're gonna introduce some board members, elect board members celebrating and recognizing the role of volunteers at the town and the work and improvement on the trailhead. So you folks are definitely all invited to come down to that meeting. And, uh, then the other big ones, questions and answers about what's going on with the trail, potential improvements in town Groton. Um, I'm told that Groton's gonna be working on reservicing the trail in October, or starting sometime in October. I was thinking of postponing our meeting till October, but we're putting on the trail. That's one thing. So as far as that goes, we would be using, um, the new trailhead parking off of Little Italy, which is not a huge space. So I also wanted to ask your permission to park cars extra along the road on Little Italy that day, that morning, uh, which is twenty-eighth for our meeting. I'm expecting maybe twenty people because one, this isn't our annual ride. Um, a lot of serious riders will be up at the beach in Hondo, uh, Bondo, uh, which is half to do the same day this year. And they have, this year probably were a large bike ride to their territory up there. Uh, so we usually get thirty-plus people. I think we're getting maybe twenty. So a handful of cars in the lot, a few down the road. With the pass rides, I'm going to the state rides down in Wells River. We've got cones, orange cones put alongside the road and where we cross, we're looking for places for safety purposes. I intend to do that again if I can get your permission to use the road, kind of mark off a section a little bit here. So it's kind of, keep an eye here if something's going on so they slow down.
Yep.
Anything you need to get a slowdown is a good deal. Uh, and the next question is, our ride this year, we're gonna take a short ride walk east from the parking, uh, trailhead parking on Little Italy, out to the junction of Brown Road three oh two. Uh, originally I wanted to have this as a kids' ride, you know, advertise as a kids' ride, but there's some issues with the trail in there. I didn't go for that. And I didn't want to go down the ball field back. And that's why I'm on three oh two at this point. We do have kids' ride. On that section of, just east of the first Beaver Pond, on the right of the trail, but he's, there's a large wash out there. Now, Michael, the other Michael, not this Michael, the planner, he emailed me telling the hint that the town is looking at, can we, are we just doing quick fix on that section?
Well, it's not the town, I don't think. It's Gary, Lamb, Dorothy with some volunteers.
Where, where, we put it out in the bid to, to repair.
Oh, did you?
Um, we've.
Sorry.
Brent's probably got some information for us. We, we see one bid. So I think tonight when you're paid, I can try to pursue. And I did, and I'm glad you came. Cause like, have you heard anything back from?
I haven't passed it on. My only bid was one individual that, um, definitely said that they wanted to, um, put in a, put in a proposal.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think that maybe some of the other ones, um, maybe have picked up some other work. I haven't talked.
Yeah.
I probably should have, I probably should have contacted them the first of the week.
So I, I guess.
I had four, four contractors that, um, that responded and looked at the project. And they took in, um, uh, said that they were interested. One contractor, um, said that they weren't interested in the landing zone. They were gonna be interested just in the power. And I said that would be bid separately. So that wasn't a problem. Two other contractors, I, I contacted, uh, chief and didn't hear back from chief. I contacted, um, I think it's still Sidney Smith, talking about Fred. And he spoke extensively to them. And he just didn't have the time because he's dedicated to the, um, building the town branch. So, um. because he's dedicated to the building, the town branch, so.
So I guess, did I do a little bit deeper dive into it and connect with?
Yeah.
The contracts. I'll get with you and find out who you've contacted.
Yeah, I talked with, I talked with.
Zach, Zach.
Zach and talked, and I talked with Matt.
Matt, okay.
And, and Logan Holloway.
Cool.
He was going to do COVID.
He was working on it today.
Yeah. So I really think we should, we'll open bids at the next, are you? When is your thing to begin?
The 28th of September.
28th, so where?
That won't be.
And this is exactly why I took the meeting.
Yeah, so.
Rigs are great, but you don't get anywhere.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have to, oh, if you agree, we'll, we'll, yeah, maybe get with Harold and see if we can just do a, I mean, we'll have to put cones up, do a temporary, you know, cars will go over it, right? I mean, but.
I'm not suggesting bikes.
I gotta look at it closer and we think we could put a little bit in there so we could use it that day without, what do you think, Brett? You've been down.
I, I think you can down to the grid or smoke a doll, just pull it in.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, so.
So just, just take some of the river bed and just push it into that hole.
Push it in, yeah.
And then.
Then when we get.
You know, make it a little sandy. Because I think most of that material is sandy.
Very sandy.
Uh, so it won't be, it won't be good, but they won't be falling into a.
Well, I know we got some material coming out up on Powder Spring Road, so that's going to go up to that.
Yeah.
Maybe a load of that, you know, you know, maybe instead of taking that up there, okay, we can take it down there and make it so it's passable for, and if you could put some cones up or we could just.
Well, I'm a big believer in AV and C.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to cover all bases. Right now, you could, a person could on their own ride by that section. It's narrow. You gotta try and creep along it. But when you advertise a bid to have people out there coming, of course, the standards have to be higher. So we want to make sure.
Yeah, so.
And like I mentioned earlier, I will be getting some cones from the state. And anything on that and how we fix it, we can decide right after the night before what we want to do, up to and including riding that far and back. The idea is we get people here for, the main thing for us right now is one, just kind of have a smaller ride. So next year, I can call it the 28th annual, when the trail's started. We have a state ride like we have in Passions. And get people to come to town meetings to learn more about the river park, learn more about the parking, learn more about what drive plans for the trail through there and just start.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll have it, so it'll work.
Right. My contact information.
Oh, hi, yeah.
The contact information's on the bottom of the table I gave you there. So there's definitely things where we can stay in communication and talk right up. And then we'll assess like the day before, where we are, what's safe, what happened. As you know, disaster.
But even as far as parking along Little Whittle Road, that's.
Okay. And like you said, I'll bring some cones, just trying to get people. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for what you do and hopefully get a good turnout.
Yeah, it's down the road. It's going to be all nice and we'll have Sunday days.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Crossmont Trail Association has been a huge supporter and very actively involved with our board at Groton Gateway Park. So I'd like to, the project, so I'd like to thank, and Great Western, I think, has not missed the meeting. We will drive to Groton. We've got a meeting again tomorrow night. And so their involvement and support and help has been really key for us. As we, as you mentioned, it sounds like by early November, we should be done with most of this project. So, and great display of mutual, so.
He's our executive director, our one employee.
Yeah.
And about the next year, when things are smoothed out, we can do our original ride, which we haven't done for years, from Kellapong, Park Theater, down to Blue Mountain School. The last few years, which, when we did that, that involved some shellering for some people back. And when COVID hit, of course, that was out the window. So to still do it, we came up with the idea, I think it was Parker Mike's idea, is to go from Upper Valley Grill up to Lanesboro and back. And that way we can still have a ride that was back and forth. So that's why we've been attentive. I'd like to get back to Blue Mountain. That's kind of the anchor of all our communities and I'd like to get them involved. Also, we know on there, in my thing at the very end, in our advertising, we advertise people who go up to Upper Valley Grill for lunch. We've been doing that for the last couple of years because we sat in there. And a big part of our Crossmont thing is supporting local businesses. And I talk to Bill about it and he's been helping us and stuff, so. That's, that's it. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Anybody else?
So if you get some, if you get some other bids in, you're only to the end of the month.
We're going to do it at the next week.
Okay.
Two weeks, right?
October 2nd.
October 2nd, we'll open.
Okay.
And I know we're pushing the limit on getting it done, but.
Go, yeah.
But I really not comfortable with one bid.
Should we agree? We get some, do we? Hold the stuff and maybe to get it open quicker.
Yeah, I guess we can, I think.
Just open bids.
Yeah.
Do you want to set maybe a deadline? That might be easier to tell people.
Yeah, would be, yeah, probably one, one week.
I know that it works for someone else procrastinating.
Yeah, yeah.
One more week from today.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
September 23rd.
Get it rolling at least a week. And all, with you, Brennan, we'll.
What I've tried to do, what I've tried to ask about the contractors on the, on the dry hydrant and the pump site, uh, landing zone is to put it lump sum, but also per act.
Yeah.
Okay, in place.
Yeah.
So because we don't have set figures as to how many, not like, not like the public spring job that's been all engineered and.
Right, right.
So that way it will give the board a chance to look at, okay, this, this company said that they're going to do it for, for $75,000. And another company said that they're going to do it for $65,000. Well, a $65,000 job is, is $75 a yard in place and the other company may be at 50. Okay, so it gives you the perspective of what it is, what they looked at and what they.
Well, the total yardage is important because then we know we're getting it.
Well, the total yardage, I, we don't have that figure.
Yeah, but.
But if they, if they price it per yard in place, plus the total.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, plus, plus the total, then it, then it gives you something to compare it by.
Yeah, yeah. Guys putting on three inches, they're putting on 15 inches, you know?
Yeah.
That's, so, yeah, I'll, I'll will. Tomorrow, Friday, we'll try to, you contact.
Yeah.
I'll try to catch up with you and just push it or have him in for next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at least, yeah. And if we don't get any?
Oh, and we're, we did our due diligence, so.
You know, I want everybody to have an.
We know, we got one right here, right?
Six o'clock, the time.
Six o'clock. So, yeah, if we don't, we gotta get it done. I think as far as the deadlines for getting reimbursed, we did our, what we needed to do to get bids. They can't come back on us for not.
Right.
So.
You know, and we, you know, they may have, they may, their workload may be.
Yeah, yeah. And I know I talked to Chief yesterday.
Yeah.
He just doesn't have talent.
Right.
You know, he just doesn't, lucky he's got enough material to sell us, you know?
Go on, go on.
That's why he hadn't got back.
Right. And I, I kind of felt that he, if he wanted, he would have.
Yeah, yeah, he would, he can, you know, he's, he's turned around and said, cut off most of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, one last comment. The Little Italy Trailhead parking lot on Little Italy Road is kind of like new construction like that, growing up with weeds. Is that something the town, do you get a chance to mop up?
Yeah.
Or is that something you'd like me to get in there?
No, Lisa contacted her.
What did I do? I'm sorry.
On the mullen and freshen and up.
Yeah, they have a 428.
Yeah, he's going to do it, so. That kind of, that, that kind of got away from us. That, that, that wasn't done properly as far.
Well, this construction, I know Wells River, down the other trail, when they put that new bridge in, the bayou dam blew out. That just, you know, instantly grew up all the weeds. Once you go through the season, it kind of mogs.
So we'll try to buff it up a little, reach a little more percent.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, so.
If you want to showcase your town then.
Well, we do. We, we want the best lawn in town if we can get it, but, yes.
And we will be hosting, the planning division will be hosting another public hearing on, on the Ruberside Park, Gateway Park. We've got some more plans from the designer. And so we'll be hosting another meeting, personally, not, not October. You're not going to point what the date we set?
I think it was October 8th is what the time did.
Eight, yeah.
Good.
So.
If you can keep me in the loop on that, I'd like to come. I know your first big one you had, I have a dairy thing going on. I just couldn't make it that day, but I'd like to tie a date, you know? Just come listen, you know, if you have to say, you know, as matter of Crossmont Trail Association. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else? Everything's good?
Just orders to sign.
Okay. You already signed.
Sorry, I got more to sign after yesterday.
You will.
All right. Uh, next board meeting? I guess we're not going to do the biddle and then we're going to do it next Wednesday.
Yeah, the 20th and then the 2nd.
Yeah, so.
Some of the regular stuff?
Just the regular.
Comes up, come out and then.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, and make a motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.